Hi, everyone. Welcome to the first Human Services Commission meeting of 2023. Just one moment. Let me pull up my agenda. So I just called the meeting to order. If we could do the Pledge of Allegiance first, and Noe, if you could lead that?
I'm also taking notes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
We need to work on our sync.
And Noe, if you could do the roll call, please?
Will do. So I'm going to start off how y'all are listed on the City Clerk's website. So Commissioner Sonia Wilson. Commissioner Bruce Laddie.
Not Chair, but here.
Commissioner Alexis Hemphill Elsie.
Here.
Commissioner Boiko Pachinsky. Commissioner Pamela Grammer. Commissioner David Fisara.
Present.
Vice Chair Tamara Kegel.
Here.
Chair Mariel Kreisel.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to announce Agenda Item as we move down the list, and then if you have any clarifying questions during the discussion, please raise your hand, and we'll, you know, I'll identify you and acknowledge you one at a time. Thank you so much. So the first Agenda is Special Agenda Items. There are no Special Agenda Items. The second Agenda Item is the Consent Calendar. And there is the September 14th, 2022 minutes, and the November 2nd, 2022 minutes. If we've all had an opportunity to review them, we just need to make a motion to accept the minutes as written. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move to accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second to amend the minutes or to accept the minutes.
Great. And then we have to do a vote. Is that correct, Noe?
For the minutes, it is a unanimous vote, then you don't have to go one by one, but if somebody has something to pull out and discuss, then we'll have to go one by one.
Okay, so the motion is to then accept the minutes as written. Are there any objections? Okay, I guess then there are no objections, and so the minutes are accepted as written for September and November.
Go quick. Who made the motion? Sorry, I missed that.
I did. Bruce.
Thank you.
And then Agenda Item 3, Study Session. There's no study session. And then the Agenda Item 4, Continued Items, for A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Time of the Human Services Commission Meeting. Noe, if you want to elaborate further on the City Clerk's Office guidance?
Yes. So as you all may have seen in your three emails, we are coming back, the Boards and Commissions are coming back to in-person meetings starting in March, the beginning of March. So the bill that allowed Boards and Commissions to have virtual meetings will not be extended past February. And there are no exceptions. All Boards and Commissions are coming back in person in March. What is happening now, though, is that the City Clerk's Office is trying to figure out what, where to place everybody. They're figuring out schedules, and, you know, some people will be in City Council Chambers, some people will be in City Site Rooms. But they haven't figured that out yet, and they will not know until February. So I advise you, and of course, you don't have to do this, to hold off on discussing changing the meeting date and time, because as of right now, I don't know what's available and what's doable. And if you choose something that's overlapping another Board or Commission, we'll have to have this discussion again. But that is all I have from the City Clerk's Office, and they are aiming to get that to me by February.
Noe, are they asking for our feedback or our input?
No. So before the pandemic, the Boards and Commissions already had meeting sites, but what happened is that one of them is no longer accessible to the city, and that was the Kent Edwards Center.
Really?
So they're figuring out where to place all of those so that they don't overlap.
How come the Kent Edwards Center is not available any longer?
I really don't know. Somebody told me it's because they started to use it to assist the elderly. I don't know if that's true or not. But it's just the Boards and Commissions that used to meet there, it's not a room that's available to, like, rent out for the city.
And is it, do you have to meet on a weekday? Just real, is it, or is it a seven-day meeting calendar?
Well, I actually don't know, but I am Monday through Friday, so you would be without staff.
Got it. So it's probably Monday through Friday. And then is it always supposed to be actually at, like, City Council, like, City Hall, or, you know, a city public place, or can it be another place?
So right now, all I know is that these take place in city facilities, City Hall, Park Rooms, Library Rooms. There's a room called the SMI Room, which is under the parking lot that's across the street from City Hall. Those are the rooms that are being used. I think technically you could have it somewhere else, but you'd have to make sure that all the technology is there and made, you know, to make it available for everybody.
Noe, did you, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Tamara.
I was just going to ask if it was live broadcasted to the public or if it's transmitted later.
So there will not be any video recording. We'll have audio recording, and then, of course, the minutes. So that is kind of why they want staff there to manage that aspect, because if not, then one of you would have to be elected to record and write the minutes. And yeah.
So we had originally talked about doing a survey of our members, like a MailChimp or something, to see what times would work for everybody. I assume we never did that, right? I just want to be sure I didn't miss that or that.
No, we advised not to do that because of all of the issues that we're discussing.
Okay.
So the thing that will happen is that two things will happen, because the next time you meet will be in April. So one of them will be that the City Clerk's Office will have chosen the location of our meeting, and we would have to meet on the second Wednesday at 3:00 PM at that location. Or this is where a special a special meeting just means that we meet on a date, time, or location that is not the regular. But we could also do a survey and see what time is better for y'all to meet, if that's the way you want to go. But we would still meet at that location, and yeah.
Our next meeting then is April 12th?
Correct.
But they could conceivably change our date, right, completely? It could no long, might not be Wednesdays anymore or something.
Yeah, that is all up to y'all. You could change the date, the time. I think the location, but I don't know. I don't know about that one.
No, but I'm saying the city is possibly going to change our day.
No.
I thought that's what you said.
I don't know. So City Council accepted the terms and conditions of, you know, how the Human Services Commission was set up. So that included the time and date that was put in that ordinance, which was second Wednesday at 3:00 PM. So the City Clerk can't change that. You can. You can vote and change that in the bylaws. And of course, I would have to work with your schedules.
But what were you just referring to, that they're still discussing when and where meetings are going to take place and all that? Is it just our location, then, that is potentially up in the air? It's not the when, it's the where?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I didn't understand that. Okay. They'll let us know?
Yeah, so.
For clarifying.
Yeah, and you can still discuss it, or you can table the item, but I'll leave that up to the Commission.
Can I just clarify that it is, even though we are set now for the second Wednesday at 3:00, is, were you saying that based on location availability, it may change to, like, first or third, et cetera, Wednesday? Or even that would not be changed by someone else? That would have to be changed by us?
That would have to be changed by you. Sorry, I think I went over that part real fast. I just know that the discussion is that 3:00 PM might not be the best time for y'all to meet, and your next meeting will be in person. So if 3:00 PM doesn't work with y'all, you can have a special meeting and survey what is the best time to meet. And then at that meeting, you would discuss what time to potentially change your meeting time to or date.
Okay.
But we would have to first understand, I mean, if we change our meeting date and time, we would need to know whether the location is available then, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's doable once the calendar and the calendar and placements are set in stone.
Okay.
Though I guess it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to still survey and find out if there's a better time that we want to advocate for, that everybody feels, you know, and then to come back to the city and say, what's, where can we meet if we want to meet at this time? Right? I mean, we don't know that information, so we can't discuss it now, but it would be helpful to know if, and maybe there's not a unanimous time that works for everybody, but, you know, and then we can leave it alone. But if everybody said, you know, 7:00 o'clock on Thursday or whatever, it would be better, then we could see if there's availability for a location and get it changed. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think what I can do then is, you know, based on this latest information from the City, the City Clerk's Office, what we can do is I can survey everyone this weekend, and we can gather that information. I can send it to Noe, and then he can present it to the City Clerk's Office so that they can take that into consideration when scheduling our date and time and place.
Yeah, it might be that if we all agreed a different time was better, they could say, they would say, oh, well, there's much more availability then than there is at 3:00 on a Wednesday. So, you know, it'd be good to know that, I think.
I have a kind of a question that kind of, maybe it sort of precedes this a little bit, is that are we assuming that these people here, that we finally have a quorum, like, are these the people that will be adding to the survey, or is this going to still go out to everybody who is still considered part of this Commission?
I can relate to that. So there are rules and guidelines for attendance, and I do know that there are some people who have not even been sworn in. So I am waiting to see after this meeting if anybody joins in in the next couple of minutes. I will check with the City Clerk's Office on following steps. And, and yeah, so we can send out the survey to everybody in this Commission. They can reply. They cannot. But well, you just need a majority vote. So if the five of you are voting in the next meeting, and it is the best time that works for the five of you, it passes.
Just to put a finer point on that, is there a disqualifying element to someone having not shown up at this point? I mean, for someone to have not been to all, was this our third or fourth meeting?
Our third.
Third meeting. You know, I don't think their input on this would necessarily be fair.
Are they even still a member? Technically, I believe the bylaws say if we miss two.
Have you missed, if you missed two consecutive meetings, which some people have. So, but you count as present if you attend 2/3 of the meeting. So depending on how long your meeting is, somebody could be 20, 25 minutes late, and they can still count as present. But I will follow up with the City Clerk's Office after this meeting to discuss attendance.
Can I just ask a question about the bylaws about the attendance, though? Just for my own, it was something I thought about after our last meeting when you mentioned this. Two consecutive meetings, was that by law written when these used to be monthly meetings?
So every Commission has, they meet differently, and that is based on two things. Initially, it's based on the ordinance that City Council adopted. So when the Human Services Commission was created, I don't know who created it. I don't know who worked on it. I don't know the reasoning or discussions behind it, but they agreed or put forth that y'all would be quarterly. There are a couple of quarterly Boards and Commissions. There are some that are monthly. I don't know how those are chosen or who puts, you know, who makes the input. All I know is that City Council adopts these ordinance.
So the bylaws, though, for our Commission aren't the same as the bylaws for any other Commission in terms of attendance?
Oh, no, they are.
Because what I was, so what I'm sort of getting at is like, it's just so, and again, this is means nothing, and I don't mean to, you know, suck up the time, the clock about this. But it's sort of like interesting, because two consecutive meetings, I was thinking in my mind that we used to be meeting monthly, then I was like, well, would we want to adjust it since now we're meeting quarterly? So that's basically why I was just asking that. So if it's, you know, it would just need to be changed, I think, if, you know, because consecutive could mean totally two different things now that it's quarterly, but.
Yeah, I can check with the City Clerk's Office and see if changing the attendance is something that y'all can do by a vote. But I don't know. The City Clerk knows the rules.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I don't mean to take any more time about it, but it was just a thing I thought about.
Okay, back to Agenda Item 4A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Time for Human Services Commission Meeting. And Agenda Item 4B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Commission Meetings to Take Place in Person. I will go ahead and send a doodle to everyone on the Commission regarding a date and a time, and then gather that information and send it to Noe.
Great.
And then Agenda Item 5, Staff Administrative Items. Noe, do you have anything?
No. No, I don't, but I just wanted to let y'all know that this Agenda format is newer within the last year, so that's why I left all of these. But I can also take out the items that don't have anything under them to make the Agenda shorter and cleaner next time. Sorry.
Okay, that sounds good.
Good.
Agenda Item 6, Public Hearing. There is no public hearing. Agenda Item 7, Resolutions. There are no resolutions. Agenda Item 8, There are Written Communications. There are no written communications. And then Agenda Item 9, Human Services Commission Members. Item A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Human Services Commission. I just put that item in there because it's the new year, and I was thinking that because we meet quarterly, it might be a good idea to consider issues around which we could build an ad hoc and have a special meetings of those ad hocks between the quarterly meetings. So then when we come to the quarterly meetings, you can report out on what your ad hoc is doing. That way, it's, there's just a lot more continuity, I think, and we're not losing the thread of the and meeting, you know, there's just so much period of time between meetings. It's just really hard to follow and have that continuity. So I would, you know, I would just like to open the meeting for discussion. If you have any thing that you'd like to propose to build an ad hoc around, please, please share. For example, let me, I can share one thing. So the city, last week, President Biden signed, and I'm just reading this from Representative Ted Lieu secured a 1.5 million in federal funds for Santa Monica Behavioral Health Initiatives. And they are, to kick off this work, the City of Santa Monica engaged the public benefit corporation, Initium Health, to lead public engagement and analyze different models of behavioral health care for Santa Monica. Intuitive, I'm sorry, Intuim will begin by interviewing community leaders and subject matter experts, followed by public listening sessions to begin in the coming months. The firm will make recommendations to council based on its findings by fall of 2023. So what I would recommend is perhaps that we build one ad hoc of a couple of members around that issue about, because they're going to be interviewing community leaders and subject matter experts. So what do we want to recommend? That, you know, what kind of projects would we like them to focus on? I think that would be a really good opportunity to propose some ideas to Initium, and then, you know, they can go back to City Council and make those recommendations.
I think it's a good idea to, you know, monitor what's going on there. I personally don't feel like I have a level of expertise to recommend specific behavioral health programs or ideas to Initium, but I think it would be really important for us to stay informed about it. So maybe part of it is just making sure someone or an ad hoc committee is, you know, monitoring the progress of that and informing our Committee, our Commission as to who they're talking to, what kind of input they're getting. I mean, I don't know how much access we could get to that, but to just be part of the process in that way, because I don't, and maybe some of us, some of you are, but I don't know if anybody is really a behavioral health expert that could chime in on that side of it.
Well, I think that the goal for Mr. Lieu was to, he got 1.5 million to support the City of Santa Monica's initiatives to address behavioral health needs of vulnerable residents. That's well within the purview of the Human Services Commission. And so they hired the public benefit corporation, Initium Health, to lead that public engagement and analyze different models of behavioral health care. So they're going to be interviewing community leaders, and it would be good for us, as the Human Services Commission, to be able to provide input to them about that. That's my proposal. We don't have to be mental health experts. I'm just saying, as the Human Services Commission, I think this is, you know, definitely something within our purview, and we should consider building an ad hoc around, about addressing that. How, you know, how the 1.5 million to support Santa Monica's initiatives to address behavioral health needs to vulnerable residents, how that should be, how that should play out.
That's a great one, actually. I think that, I mean, in terms of just us having a position and being able to speak to it and offer our thoughts.
Yes.
And.
It's a great opportunity for us.
Yeah, yeah, because it's kind of what we are representing for the community.
I.
When.
I agree.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, this is Tamara. I had to drop off video for just a moment, but I agree. I think this is a really important one. I think it should absolutely, we should have an ad hoc committee immediately formed for it, since there's already movement on it. I think we can ask for a liaison from either staff or City Council, whoever is leading the investigation or research into it. I think we need a liaison to be meeting with them regularly. There's going to be a lot of decisions about what the focus of the Behavioral Health Center is. And, you know, without an unlimited budget, there's going to be a lot of decisions about what they are focusing on. And so I absolutely, I think it's well worth devoting our resources to.
Yes, so I would like to make a motion, then, if there's no further discussion, to create this ad hoc around this issue. And, and, you know, elect a couple, you know, two or three people, actually, I would suggest three people, to, you know, to contribute to the ad hoc. And so I'm just making the motion. Bruce?
Sorry, before you finish your motion, I'm just wondering, because there's also this, there's also other behavioral health funds that are being earmarked for Santa Monica in the immediate future. There's the $10 million grant that comes from St. John's as part of their agreement for the expansion that they were required to give to the city. There's also a, I believe it's a million dollars a year, maybe it's a little bit more than that, for the next 10 years coming from them, that's going to go towards behavioral health facilities of some kind. And I'm just, so I'm just bringing that up because I'm wondering whether we should be looking at the whole picture of the different revenues that are going to be coming in for this same purpose and helping to coordinate between them, or whether you think it's better to just concentrate on the Initium part of it and do a separate thing for the others. And I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not suggesting one or the other, but I just want to bring that into the discussion.
Yeah, I think that we, this was just put out by the City of Santa Monica on January 4th, 2023, regarding Representative Lieu securing 1.5 million in federal funds for Santa Monica. And so I feel like our response should be, as a Commission, to develop an ad hoc to, you know, to investigate that, because they're going to reach out to community leaders. And so we want to be prepared with a response as a Commission. If there are other, you know, initiatives out there, you know, please, you know, you could propose that for a future Agenda Item that we can look into that, and then, you know, perhaps create ad hocks around that. But I feel like this is something that, because it was just proposed, that I'm just proposing that this should be our response. Go ahead, Alexa.
Great.
To Bruce's point, though, I think maybe like that's its own, like, kind of ad hoc group, or even just, like you were saying, an Agenda Line Item of, you know, understanding the financial landscape of our city and where they're kind of like, where are they leaning in towards for behavioral health, and kind of like understanding, okay, so out of the city's budget, here's this A, B, and C that are kind of dealing with our, within our topics. And how can we just kind of wrap our heads around it to understand and have a position on it and say, you know, okay, of that, you know, here's this huge juggernaut is the Initium Health, which we're, you know, looking at, but kind of like, you know, it's kind of, I think both of them are actually really good, because we should understand, you know, everything, the broader, you know, picture of our city, as well as kind of like moving forward with, since it is new, it's current, we need to have a position on this. Let's definitely have the Initium focus group and. Let's definitely have the initium focus group and but I definitely think like, I love the idea of also looking at the financial landscape.
Yeah. I'm. Possible action regarding the human services work plan. So this is part of the work plan. There can be more than, you know, just the initiative, you know, the one initiative that I'm proposing, right? We can have an ad hoc to investigate the entire, you know, big, human services, big picture in Santa Monica. So it, it sounds like, you know, there's, there's maybe two proposals out there. One, to really focus on the, the Ted Liu's federal funds for Santa Monica for behavioral health initiatives. And then another one to really investigate the, the different proposals that are out there that would contribute towards behavioral health in Santa Monica.
And I would support that. I think that it makes sense to have that two level analysis because we do need sort of the micro of what's actually specifically with this. But also because, as you said, we have both federal funds coming in, but also it sounds like we've got private funds from St. John's. We've got different types of money coming in also. It also needs to be looked at.
I believe, I just want to add one differentiation also is St. John's is not assuring or not devoting any beds at the location or like mental health crisis situations in a behavioral health center would. I believe St. John's discussed that and, but was not able to, they are providing, they do have earmarked money, you know, as a, to be a benefit for the city, but none of that is going to go specifically to beds for mental health crises within Santa Monica. Santa Monica doesn't, there's nowhere, I believe, in Santa Monica at this moment that provides that right now.
No, you're absolutely right. We, you know, that was a lot of the discussion at the planning commission was trying to get St. John's to agree to add inpatient beds as part of their expansion. And it was the land, line in the sand that they refused to cross. And the way they tried to sort of, if I can be ungenerous, buy their way out of it was to say, we'll give $10 million to the city right away if we get our plans approved, which they can use at their discretion towards mental health, as long as it's not making us build the beds here. So that plus an annual amount that they're donating is what's being considered for creating a mental health facility at some location within Santa Monica or right on the edge of Santa Monica. One location possibility is at the airport, actually. Right at Bundy and Olympic. I think it's Bundy and Olympic somewhere, no, not Bundy and Olympic. It's would be Ocean Park. Yeah. It's right at the, there's a piece of land, a parcel of land, just, I'm getting off, off track. But it's, there's a parcel of land just inside the edge of the airport that is public land that could be used for this. And because it's on a transit line, it's very desirable. And so that's where they're looking at, but it's a tremendously expensive thing. The $10 million would be, you know, like a down payment on it. So it's, it's how you find the other funding to make that work from state, county and federal sources that becomes really tricky.
Great, so I just want to go back to our proposals that are on the table here and to vote. To not only accept the, the two proposals for the specific ad hocks, but also to vote to add people to those ad hocks and get them going. Okay, so the first proposal is to have an ad hoc on the, the general landscape of human services in Santa Monica and understand what proposals are out there for funding and, and how they are being used. Do I have, so that's the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
All right, thank you, David. And, um, so I just want to also say, before we move on to the next proposal, let's elect people to this ad hoc before we go on. Who would like to be on this ad hoc? Bruce, Alexis? Anyone else? And Tamara? Great. So, Noe, do we need to, to vote on that? Or can we just agree that, that Bruce, Alexis and Tamara are on this ad hoc?
I think unanimous, a unanimous vote. Is there anybody opposed to this motion? Unanimous passes.
Right. Okay, great. And then the second one is, and I'll just read it through again for clarity. Last week, President Biden sent, assigned a 1.7 trillion omnibus spending package that includes 1.5 million to support the city of Santa Monica's initiatives to address behavioral health needs of vulnerable residents. To kick off this work, the city of Santa Monica engaged the Public Benefit Corporation Initiative Health to lead public engagement and analyze different models of behavioral health care for Santa Monica. Intuitem will begin by interviewing community leaders and subject matter experts, followed by public listening sessions to begin in the coming months. The firm will make recommendations to council based on its findings by fall of 2023. The proposal is to establish an ad hoc as, as the Human Services Commission to think about, you know, how, how that's going to look, how we want, you know, to, to consider how these funds could be used and make that proposal when we, and reach out to initium health to, to make those proposals. Do I have, so that's the, the motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so who did the second? Okay, Bruce, okay. Okay, so, and then who would like to be on this commission? I would like to be, and David and then Alexis. Great.
Could you be on too?
Why not?
Yeah, why not? So.
Would you correct me if I am wrong, but it, then ad hoc is maxed out at three people? Is that right, Noe?
I think it can be three to four.
It's three right now, just because you are not a full, you have one open seat. So, yeah. So you're, the Human Services Commission has nine seats. Right now there are only eight that have been filled.
Okay, great. So David, Alexis and myself will be a part of the second initiative to explore that, the initiative by Ted Liu. Anyway, okay, great. Moving on. Discussion, okay, so agenda item nine B, discussion on possible action regarding commissioner participation in the 2023 homeless count. Please save the date for the 2023 homeless count on Wednesday, January 25th. The count will begin around 10:30 PM and there's more information to follow. The volunteer registration is open now. And Noe, do you have any, any further information about that?
So it is encouraged for not just boards and commissions, but they also encourage staff to volunteer for the homeless count. I do not know what the need is at the moment. I don't know if they need more people to sign up or if they've hit capacity, but they have not told me, no. So if y'all would like to volunteer as a group, you can, and you can just, you don't have to vote on that. You can just sign up on your own. However, they are only accepting teams of about three or four. And yeah. Alexis?
I, I think the, on the signup, though, it, if you sign it, like when you click on signup as a team, it, it, that person who's creating the team needs everybody's mobile numbers and email addresses to do that. So it's like one person fills the form out for everybody. You can't bypass that, that step.
Yeah, so this is not something that y'all have to do, but if you do want to do it, the Disabilities Commission is doing it together, three of their members. You know, it's a good way to kind of hang out and form a relationship with your fellow commissioners because y'all are brand new. But I believe their capacity is four per team. Bruce?
So I'm already signed up as an individual, which I did last year as well because of COVID. I didn't want to, usually they put people together who are individuals and just put them in a car and, you know, off you go. But I'm not terribly comfortable with that. So I'm signed up as an individual, but I just got an email from the city saying, you know, they have more than enough people for logistics, but they really need more people to count. And could I either find myself a team or can I be assigned? So my first preference would be to work with a couple of you guys, if you want to go out and, and make that our team. You know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm totally boosted and vaccinated and would wear a mask and, and being ultra cautious. So I would just ask people to, to wear a mask if they're in my car. So that's my pitch, but it's a really good thing to do. If any of you guys want to join.
What's the time commitment?
It starts, well, they have an orientation that starts at roughly 11:00 PM. And that, and that takes not quite an hour. And then you go out from like midnight until you're done canvassing your area, which takes between two and four hours. So, you know, it's, it's a late night thing, but that's kind of part of the adventure.
I won't be able to attend, unfortunately. Do you do this in a car driving down the street or do you walk?
It's, different sections are, are assigned different modes, but generally you're given a little map. You know, you're giving like a, given like a subsection of Santa Monica and you're supposed to canvas every street alley, you know, every inch of it that you can. And in some cases, that's just driving and looking out both sides of the window with your team. But in a lot of cases, it's getting out of the car and walking the, walking the street to be sure you're not missing anything. So they give you instruction on that. And you don't interact with anybody. It's just purely an observation. You know, you're not, it, it's, there's nothing confrontational about it. You're not asking people if they're homeless. You're just purely observing. And so it's, it's, it's not as difficult as it might sound. So if, if anybody's interested, you can just reach out to me separately or, you know, my, my email, my regular email is just bruce-leddy@gmail.com and send me an email.
I've done it in years past and it is, it's very, it's actually kind of fun with your team. I have to check that I have, you know, the childcare for my little ones. And that my husband is fine. Maybe that night. I'm not sure about this one, but, but I may.
No problem.
Great, thank you, everyone. If you are planning to participate, it'll be interesting to hear how that went on our next meeting. And then, um, public input, there's, there's no public input, I believe. And before we adjourn, I just want to also say, please feel free to go ahead with the ad hocks, reach out to one another and schedule and, you know, the time and, and date that works best for you. And, and then, you know, definitely report back when we meet up in April. Thank you, everyone, again. Oh, go ahead, Alexis.
Sorry, I had, I'm so sorry, I have all these questions. The Human Services Grant Program.
Yes.
That, so does that also kind of abut or kind of overlap with one of these ad hocks in any way? Like, well, actually, the, the landscape one, perhaps?
One.
Okay, okay, I was just wondering, because I think, now, Noe, this is a, do you, if you applied to be one of the reviewers of those grant applications, do we hear soon if you?
I am not part of that division. I, I don't know. You can reach out to them.
Okay.
And yeah.
I, I can, I, I am on, I got an acceptance to the review panel a couple of days ago. So I don't know, Alexis, if you applied and you haven't heard that, that seems, it's, it would be in your Santa, uh, no, I think it was in my regular email. Whatever email you used on the application, they should have responded to by now.
Okay, I'll take a peek.
Yeah, uh, so, you know.
Insight to the, the, the ad hoc then, because, you know.
Yeah, I, I, that way I'll be able to report back to the commission about what kind of grants were out there. And, yeah, I mean, all this stuff, all this subject matter that we're discussing in ad hocks feels to me like all of what, what we should be doing as a commission. It's just that we meet so infrequently. The ad hoc idea is a good way to sort of get involved more often and more proactively. But I think all of us should be trying to educate ourselves on all the different stuff that's going on. It's a lot, you know, and.
It's a lot.
There's no obvious source. I mean, I would welcome anyone's suggestion of where to find out more about this stuff. I, you know, attend other commissions and pick stuff up there and city council, but, you know, it's, there's, it's very complicated. The city spends something like $50 million a year on, you know, homeless services and other related services. But it's kind of opaque as to where and how that money gets spent. And it would be great for our commission to have more input on it. And it's probably off agenda, but that's my rant for today.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone, for, for attending and look forward to meeting with you in the, our respective ad hocks. Have a good week.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.